Yeah, recording has started.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, is it okay for me to begin? A thumbs up? Commissioner Adams, is it okay for me to begin?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you now. Yes. All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Human Resources Commission Special Session Meeting. Today is Thursday, December 5th, 2024, and I will start with roll call. Commissioner Adams?
Present.
Commissioner Banner?
Present.
Commissioner Gannon?
Present.
Commissioner Jordan?
Present.
Commissioner Cohen?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd? Commissioner Lloyd? It's noted that she is not present. Commissioner Whitlock? Commissioner Whitlock? It's noted that she is not present. Commissioner Armstead? Commissioner Armstead? It is noted that she is not present. And Commissioner Wooton? Commissioner Wooton? It is noted that he is not present. We do have a quorum. I hand it over to you, Commissioner Adams. We have the floor.
Linda, good morning, everyone, and thank you for taking the time out for this special session of review for the strategic plan for the Housing Resource Commission, Affordable Housing Resources. Main purpose, I wanted to go through the plan, prior plan, and then highlight what has been accomplished, what is pending, and what has not been addressed. All the remaining individuals who were there originally, what was Commissioner Gannon, who was, who remains with us, who was there for the full development of the strategic plan. So if she doesn't, if she does not mind, I would like for her to kind of walk us through and scan through the strategic plan for 21 through 25, and we can highlight those areas of accomplishment and those areas yet pending. And then what I would like, like to recommend is that we assign some committee groups among commissioners to study various parts of the, of the strategic plan and to bring that back in January and then start full-fledged modifications to adapt the next year of your plan, if that is okay with everyone. I would like to, if we could go to, Linda, can you bring up the strategic plan, please?
Oh. One second.
If you have the plan in front of you, commissioners, if you can go to page 19, where it says Financial Resources and Partners, I want to start there and have a brief discussion. Is there anybody have a copy of the, have a copy of the strategic plan?
Say, go to page 19?
19, yes. Before we get started, I want to offer congratulations to Amber for her appointment as director.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have page 19?
All right. Are you guys able to see that so far? Scroll on down to 15. That's the beginning of page 19.
Further. It says funding resources and partners.
You want me to scroll down some more?
It's actually page 15 of the book, Melinda, so if you're looking at the pages at the bottom of the book, it's 15.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
Thank you.
Or rather, what is that? Is that? Sixteen, I'm sorry. Sixteen, the next page, sixteen. Right there.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
This one outlines the resources and financial resources and partners that were discussed with the prior development of the plan, and it outlines each funding source breakdown. Want us to walk our way down to 18, page 18, where it says Housing Resource Commission and projected funds that they were, they were projected at that time that we should have in our coffers. So, Commissioner Gannon, can you kind of walk us through the financial resources and partners and kind of check out just the advanced funds that did not happen, blah, blah, blah?
Thank you, Chairman. You want me to walk the commission through the other fund section of this or the entire section?
Financial funding source, funding sources.
Okay, where she has it. So this list is a compilation of all the different fund sources that are touched or administered, I guess is the best word, out of the Department of Human Services at St. Louis County in the various groups and divisions that are within the department. So on this first page, we have a couple of, you have the Community Development Block Grant Award, which they receive annually. It's an entitlement grant. When this was written, there were also a couple of coronavirus relief funds that had been awarded by HUD, so that's the CV1 and the CV2. And the next page, you have the, if you could go to the next page, Melinda. The COCs has to compete annually for their fundings. This is the amount that they received in 2020. The emergency solutions. Let me go back to the COC. So that's, you know, again, a competitive grant that isn't that where St. Louis County DHS is the collaborative applicant, but that's not always money that they receive necessarily. They have to compete. And it goes for, I don't want to get too, too far in the weeds on each of these. I'm just going to try to stay high level. On the ESG money, that is something annually that the county receives. So this is their allocation in 2020 again for our homeless services, and then there were homeless services dollars allocated again at the coronavirus time for ESG, so they had two different buckets for that. On the following page, you have the home.
Commissioner, for the ESG CV1?
Yes.
Is it, do you know if that will be continued according to the budget for this coming year?
So if I was going to update this document for the coming year, I would be eliminating any of the CV monies. I'm, Amber's probably better positioned to answer the question, but my assumption is that these dollars have been awarded and potentially expended at this point. So the regular funds that are received in DHS include the traditional Community Development Block Grant, the COC, which is competitive, the ESG, which is an annual entitlement, the home, which is an annual entitlement. I'm going to stop there. Those are the federal funds that are delivered, so what there are, you know, five years ago, four years ago, there was monies that were awarded, and I think since then, there have been additional monies that have been awarded under special related to the, so I guess ARPA was, is out there as well. I don't know where the county is with those monies. The other two funds that are listed here, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Housing Resources Commission Fund, I think we're all familiar with, and those are funds that we actually decide how those are expended. The idea behind listing all of these funds together is for this commission to be able to understand the reach that the Department of Human Services has in, in its ability to impact the, the delivery of homeless services dollars and affordable housing in the county for the Housing Resources Commission to be able to make decisions about the monies that it awards in conjunction with the other activities that go on with the county. The Housing Resources Commission is specially placed, positioned where it oversees both homeless dollars and affordable housing dollars. It has the ability to think strategically about how all of these buckets of monies sort of work together and where we can apply these local funds to further the overall objectives of housing in the county. This strategic plan is also intended to be about moving people along a spectrum in housing where anyone might come in somewhere along the line, whether they're in a temporary shelter or permanent supportive housing, or they get into public housing or a voucher, or eventually maybe living in affordable housing or Lytec housing or moving on to homeownership. You know, this list is supposed to facilitate us looking at how are all of these dollars being used to meet our overall goals? And again, where do we want to make an investment or make recommendations about investment to reach the goals that we have ultimately to get people stably housed?
Commissioner Gannon, looking at these last two items for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as well as the Housing Resource Commission, is it reasonable to say that we have not been able to reach the estimated goal of those funding recommendations?
These are not recommendations. These are simply explanations of what the money can be used for and, and who it could be used with. I can't remember the amount that we have in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We haven't made any awards out of that. I don't think we've sufficiently sussed out the issue of medical marijuana versus recreational and what can we still collect? And whatever, are we going to try to collect something? I don't think that's been, I don't think we've necessarily gotten to the bottom of that, but we haven't made any awards out of the trust fund. The Housing Resources Commission dollars, we have not done anything different with those dollars. They've been, continue to be used in the same manner. They've always been used. I think we've gotten some education about what that process is and the why. But I don't think we've necessarily zoomed out in our role as the Housing Resources Commission to think more broadly about those awards and, and how they fit into this bigger picture about what we're doing to impact housing in the county, but we have been making those awards annually.
May I, may I ask a question?
Who's speaking? Because I can't see the family.
This is Commissioner Armstead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi, everybody. So from a strategic plan standpoint, to really kind of look at the continuum, are we able to measure a family that's unhoused, that comes in for some type of sheltering needs, getting a voucher, getting some type of stability after that? From a strategic plan standpoint, like how do, how do we measure that? And then how would we allocate dollars, not just for the measuring it, but to literally follow a family or fol, you know, follow someone through this project? If we've accomplished.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Is that question for me?
Yes, yes. When you spoke about the strategic plan part and us trying to go from unhoused to stability, like I was just, could you elaborate a little bit more on that from the standpoint of how we would measure it? And then how dollars would be allocated to ensure that that's happening for, for people and families and such?
Sure. So my, my sense is that what you're asking for right now doesn't exist. My opinion is that that's problematic. So my involvement in this commission and with all of these different funds has been a thrust toward doing what you're talking about. And so, you know, if we want to do something like solve the problem of homelessness or make sure everyone is stably housed, how do we do that? And there are multiple groups of people in the county working on this issue. They are not working together on this issue. So the continuum of care does have a tracking system that they use. I think it's the HMIS, Homeless Management Information System, I believe is what it is, but it, it from, and I don't know a lot about it, and so I'm not the expert, but my sense is that, the limited information I do have is that it's a tracking system, you know, among where, or that shows where people have gotten services. It doesn't necessarily say this person was ultimately housed. I, I don't think we have that system set up in the county. I believe that type of system would be helpful to us in the county. I believe that setting goals, measurable goals around getting people housed would be helpful in helping us solve this problem. I think it's a solvable problem. I think we need to orient all of our resources in the same direction, and I don't think we have a collective group of people and a critical mass of people in this space working in the same direction to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Armstead. To the, to the board, to the commission as a whole, what I wanted to, want you to see is here's where we, here's what we started and implemented back in 2021 as far as the strategic plan. I wanted you to see all the, all the resources that's involved, even though we're not part of the allocation process. We have our funding that's implemented within the whole scheme of the funding process. And I want you to see that so as we do the modifications for the five-year plan for 2026 through, I think it's 2031, 2030, we were, we can see how the breakdown is established with those other areas. Because from our last financial report, it was estimated that our budget would be cut, so the thing that was expected in 2021, at a time of $30,000, it's not going to look the same. So having said that, Mr. Banner, Fisher King mentioned that you would have a better handle on where we sit in terms of the funding sources going into 2025. Is there a, has the county council provided the funding breakdown that we could utilize once we update our financial, even our five-year plan? Do you have access to those numbers? And could you give us a, this is where the time is to when you can have those delivered for our review?
Well, I'll, I'll try to answer your question. I'm not sure I understand it the way that it's phrased, but to go back to Shannon's point on the page, on pages 16, 17, and 18. So all of the funding that includes COVID, so ESG CV1, ESG CV2, those are items that are, are about to be exhausted. CDBG CV1, CDBG CV2, those, those are funding streams that are near exhaustion. So those, those will leave. Those, those will leave us. We've expended those funds. The, the other funds will remain. Council has not yielded an approved 2025 budget yet. So until, until they do, I won't have answers on, on that piece. But what I can say is that internally with the Department of Human Services, we do track our participants who come through our doors. So to Commissioner Armstead's question, there, I have not seen a comprehensive tracking system that holds all of the access doors so that we could follow all families throughout St. Louis County like that. But within the Department of Human Services, any families that come through our door, so whether they're coming through Kathy J. Wyman for shelter, whether they're, they're coming through the supportive housing program for homeless services, or whether they come through our Division for the Office of Community Development utilizing CDBG funds or home, home dollars, we track those families. So we have that ability to, to track and measure and follow those, those individuals. So I can speak to that end, but we, we don't have a collective, comprehensive, coordinated tracking system for individuals who come through the Housing Authority, who come through necessarily any, any other access point that's outside of the Department of Human Services. So I want to kind of wrap up a couple of different points that I've heard talked about, but I don't know if that answers your question, Chairman Adams, but those are some, some of the points I can speak to.
Commissioner Banner, that, that did answer a part of, you know, what I was looking for. But the most important thing is you don't have those numbers yet because the council has not approved that yet. So once those numbers are approved, then we would like to access through those numbers so we can then decide how we can do modifications for the strategic plan.
And then also just food, food for thought that I think, you know, is, is a topic that, that we talked about recently at our last meeting was just that because the funding for, that comes through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Housing Resource, Resources Commission, that, that money is so slim and so limited, and it is reducing itself over time that it really should be leveraged as gap funding. It's very, very, it's going to be very, very difficult as we move forward to try to, you know, almost treat these funds as if they're, they're really sustainable funds. You know, they should be filling gaps at this point because they're, they're dwindling over time. So I just kind of want to keep that at the forefront of our, our mind for this group, for this commission who, who has the reach of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money, those funds and the Housing Resources Commission HRC funds. So that's on page 18 of the actual document, which would be 21. So of the, of the Adobe version, if you will, so those are the, that's where you'll find what, what is titled Other Funds. Those are the funds that the Housing Resource Commission has, has reached over. The other buckets of money that I mentioned come through the Department of Human Services and are used in the, the, the strategy for those funds are different, is all. The strategy for those funds are different, very different. And any funds that are notated as CV, COVID funds, those, those will be leaving us. Those are more like, they're, they're, they're coming to a close, I would say.
I appreciate the, the points. They're so salient to me, Commissioner Banner, because I, I believe personally I get a little wrapped up in the continuum. Like I, I tend to want to think of a family, when I know we all do, that enters an unhoused situation having a light at the end of the tunnel and not be a repeat unhoused situation where some, somebody is stabilized. It's great to have a shelter, but nobody wants to live in a shelter. Like everybody who's at a shelter wants housing for their family, for their children, you know, what, you know, you all know those names. But when it comes to us, whenever we're looking at our budgets and the money, our money is, for the most part, if, if I'm recalling correctly, goes to shelters, some type of a shelter. And so I, I almost feel like I need to level set for my own, for myself, that that's where the money, the money is slim and the money's going to go to shelters. Because that's, if a person doesn't have anywhere to sleep at night, they need someplace to sleep. And all of this other stuff around that same person going to a different housing situation, I just don't know if that really is realistic for us, this, this group of commissioners, because of the funding that we have, it just tends to go to the, I, I don't know, when you said gap, I thought about like emergency. Like everything is really just a critical emergency shelter for us. So I, I'm just, I just want to be realistic, you know, in the work that we're doing and not, because I remember at a, a session some, some time ago in person, you all may have, may recall, I was, I kept saying, well, wait, maybe we should stop giving to the shelters because the United Way, they're going to figure it out on their own, and let's try to figure out how to get people housed. And people were saying, wait a minute, you can't do that. So I just, I guess I'm just trying to be realistic as we, and not waste time and, and, and that type of thing.
So we did, we did fund the Housing Resource Commission as, as a collective determined that, I think, so we had multiple, we had shelters that we funded, we did some street outreach. So, you know, I think you're absolutely right in that it, it, it does appear that sort of the trend has been for us to focus on crisis stabilization, taking the funding that we, we get and focusing on crisis stabilization, which because this is, as I mentioned, gap, I, I see it as gap funding because it's, it's just, it's, it's a, it's not small money, but it's small enough that, that I think we have to be very strategic about where we place it. But, but you're right in that I, I would agree with you that it, it does appear that we have been trending toward crisis stabilization. I don't necessarily think that that's the, that's the wrong move. I just, I think what, there may be, there may be other opportunities as we get to the bottom of that Affordable Housing Trust Fund money. Because internally, my staff are, are this, you know, we're researching this heavily. We are trying to get answers, and in fact, we, we may, we may have, we may have an update very, very soon, but it, it is, I don't think that it's inappropriate for us to be focusing on crisis stabilization with our funding, you know, with, with the Housing Resource Commission. But I think just in terms of the continuum, you know, as Shannon was mentioning, you know, I think it might be helpful to the Housing Resources Commission to kind of see a visual of the continuum. So as we're talking about crisis stabilization and moving people through the system so that they can eventually become homeowners, what does that journey look like? What are the access points? And then maybe strategically, we can think about other decisions as we're better informed. So I'm just, I'm just, you know, having, having that real conversation. So I'm just, you know, having that real conversation with the group about this. But I'll pause there.
Commissioner Banner, as well as Commissioner Armstead, let me remind the commission that, you know, we have a certain purview as the Housing Resource Commission as to what we can address with the funds that have been allocated to us. And with the strategic plan that it outlined, it was heavily depending on having a functional Affordable Housing Trust Fund who maybe put, as Commissioner Banner stated, use it as gap funding for some of the other areas of priority that the commission had. Goal was and the hope, I believe then, was that there will be substantial funds that could be followed into the trust fund up to this point so that we can start looking at maybe prioritizing a area of stabilization for those who find themselves in homelessness or in a crisis situation. Providing with stability. Most funds are still low and they're still, we're still trying to see how those funds are going to be pulling in, documenting the allocated so that we can start making a decision, all right, here's going to be the first priority of the Housing Trust Fund going into 2025 or 2026 or 2027. Because now we know this is our funding flow. This is, we can project based upon prior year, what funds are coming in that we can utilize for our specific project goals for the Housing Trust Fund. And I believe that those issues that Commissioner Armstead are talking about, it could be focused within the Housing Trust Fund area because we control that area. We control the allocation of funds through the areas that we find to be a priority. So if we can go back to the top of the document, the table of contents, and I think we can better see what the commission decided at that time, what should be our projected purview for the prior, five-year strategic plan. And when we look at those prior priorities, we can determine if we're going to keep those priorities or need to change those. Let's go back and look at the table of contents for the you can go back and blend into that page.
The table of contents?
There we are. This is the summary, the background, the timeline. It mentioned that we did get public feedback in designing the five-year strategic plan, housing in St. Louis County, those current issues, the issues at that time that were current, that St. Louis County was facing in terms of housing instability. And then the establishment of the Housing Trust Fund, which was mapped and modified after the trust fund that was established for the city of St. Louis. And financial resources departments we just went through to get the conversation started. Purview of the Housing Resources Commission and then the strategic framework. Then what's next? As Commissioner King mentioned earlier, keeping it high level, let's go through the areas, starting with housing in St. Louis County. And Commissioner King, kind of give us a high-level bullet point. And then we'll decide on how we should plan our committee, a committee discussion and research. Commissioner King.
I'm sorry, Chairman, what would you like for me to hit on exactly?
We want to start with housing in St. Louis County, page six of the table of contents. And it's kind of walk us through this high level, how that was, how those items came about, and then we'll go back and prioritize what we should focus on from a committee standpoint.
The stuff starting on page six came from some work that had been done recently at that time, I think, by the Planning Department and, you know, their research. So I think a similar place to grab data, if that's the direction that we are going, would be from the county's 2050 plan. They have a bunch of data that they've collected recently that's similar to this. That would be helpful to inform the overall picture of housing. That goes through, I don't know what page you're on, Melinda, but all the way through fifteen, it looks like.
Fifteen.
Right? So, I mean, there was, let me see, I'm trying to see where you are because I've got it pulled up. You are asking about all the data first, or did you want me to look at the timeline? I'm sorry, Chairman. I mean, the introduction was, I mean, there was, there was certain things happening at the time that this was written that are not happening in the county right now, right? Like there had just been the work of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Task Force. There was a bunch of research that was completed there that was established and put under this commission. And the units that administer affordable housing dollars were also moved into the Department of Human Services that was administering the homeless dollars. And so the strategic plan was, you know, in part trying to lay this out, right? Like here's all the different things that have been going on in housing in St. Louis County government, basically. And so how do we set priorities? And I think to the discussion that Commissioner Armstead and Commissioner Banner, you know, your all's comments, I think they're both, you know, well-taken. It's this whole thing about a comprehensive system and tracking people and all of that is complex and overwhelming and complicated. Like it just is. I've been working on this for so many years and my brain starts to hurt sometimes because it's hard. It's easier to just focus on what we have control over in our funds and yes, leverage those funds to go along with other things that are happening. There hasn't been a place before in the county that I know of where people can come together to have conversations about bigger picture ideas. There's not really like a public forum where that happens. I think it happened somewhat in the COC forum. But I think that was another idea about, you know, giving this commission another funding source to oversee and trying to generate some of that conversation and generate some of that bigger picture thinking about what we're doing. Because it's just not happening, you know, moving all of the units together in one place in St. Louis County because they're all administering the same, all of that is just sort of, you know, a push in that direction. There is a consolidated planning effort that goes on in St. Louis County that's required by HUD. This document aligns with the timing of that document on purpose so that this commission can track and understand and work with the staffs who are responsible for putting those plans in place so that these can be coordinated and work together. But it is a lot. And I say all that in part, right now, Chairman Adams, because I don't know, when I thought about a strategic plan for this group moving forward, I don't know that it has to be this plan again. I don't know that it has to be a redo of what you have here. Maybe it's something simpler. I don't know, but this report was, you know, timely because of, again, the work of the Trust Fund Task Force, the establishment of that, the changing of the composition of the commission, moving the units into the Department of Homeless Services and this sort of acknowledgement of getting some strategic direction here, knowing that we had some good research in the county about the status of housing. And so we brought all that together in this report. And we did put together this timeline. We had a working group that did that. We had, I think, I can't remember exactly what the public hearings were and how that worked. But we had a lot of, again, this data from our Planning Department, brought together all the data about the different fund streams. And said, this is how we, this is the direction that we think this should go and set those priorities.
When this particular strategic plan was put together, what did the housing commission at that time, what did they contribute to this?
They were not active participants in developing the plan. It was more on the staff side. I think it was during COVID and that made things difficult. And the Housing Resources Commission was significantly changed when the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was established because before that, the commission had been in existence for about 20 years and was a relatively low-key commission that did just preside over supplementing the shelters. That was really just sort of how that had gone. But when the trust fund was added and then the membership of the commission changed and the commission got a new mission and objectives, you know, it really changed the way the commission operated. It got a bunch of new members and that's us. And I think we have been working over the past several years to figure out how do we get this, you know, how do we go in this direction? How do we bring energy here? How do we make this happen? And I think we all recognize it's very hard.
Agree that the strategic plan going forward must be simplified. The focus should be the strategic plan for the housing commission and how we're going to utilize the affordable trust fund going forward. Because we'll be making allocations, like you said, for what Commissioner Banner was stating, grant funding, funding funds where needed, as needed. So we don't need all the information that was provided by the planning committee. It does give us oversight, I mean insight into housing issues overall. But I think our new five-year plan will be greatly modified. I would like Vice Chairman Jordan to kind of give some input as to as Chairman Jordan, if you have surveyed the plan, the power plan, can you kind of give us a little recommendation on, from your standpoint and your point of view, what we should keep, what we should make go, and we'll continue the conversation from there.
Yeah, I really don't have anything, recommendations. I have been reviewing the plan, but I haven't really dug deep into it. I like Shannon's recommendation, really, that, you know, not saying that we should, I guess, that this isn't something that we should just adhere to blindly and, you know, and just because this was what the direction that they wanted to go in five years ago doesn't mean that we have to go forward. But I don't, Commissioner, I'm sorry. I don't have any recommendations for you as far as how we should proceed. Are we, is it our goal, is it your desire, I guess, for us to create, since this is coming to an end in 2025, to create something that can help us for the next four years? So create an entirely new document?
New document, modified specifically for the Housing Resource Commission. Like Commissioner King was saying, this was based upon a lot of groups coming together with a combination of resources. And they gave an overall view which included the commission. We want our five-year plan to be, this is what we would like to do in the next five years with funds allocated, and these are our priorities with the funding that we have, with how we will place that funding. So it's going to be greatly modified, but we don't want to take out everything, but anything else that's specific for the Housing Resource Commission. If we go to page twenty-two, it outlines at that point what the strategic priorities were. Melinda, can you go to page twenty-two of the document? I think it's nineteen of the document.
Thank you.
Nineteen.
This is nineteen financial resources?
You know, on the document, it's page nineteen of the Resources Commission's strategic priorities. Right below this, right below the financial resources, right below that. So in the entire document, it outlines what the, or it would be for the Housing Resource Commission as Commissioner King was saying. It was reworked, it was changed from being a quiet, you know, low-key group, to be a more proactive group, you know, heavily involved in addressing issues concerning homelessness and then leading towards stability. And the process with the funding stream from the council was that it will provide the trust fund with significant funding so we can allocate funding where needed. And I think that's where we should focus on for our priorities as we develop our new five-year plan, starting with year twenty-six. It outlines here, in pursuit of an overall strategy as noted earlier, the Housing Resource Commission and the St. Louis County professional staff started with an inventory of numerous recently completed reports and action plans. The review provided a full array of recommendations considered, each from groups of thoughtful, engaged professionals, individuals, and each had an element of public engagement. The commission also reviewed the housing data in this report and considered the recent work of the Housing Affordable Trust Task Force, which spent several months deliberating affordable housing priorities and goals. So all that was hashed out, all that was thought out. So we don't need to reinvent the wheel as far as to strategize. We want to deal with the issue of homelessness, leading towards stability, then possibly permanent housing. West Canada's funding, as we have seen over the past two years, the funding has tickled in and we've gotten a decent amount now, but it's still not a lot of money. It can really only be used for gap funding, as well as maybe some clinical assistance. And then for our purpose, if we want to use the funding to develop a plan, I've always had a passion for the tiny house project. How can we incorporate tiny house projects that to lead families to stability? And maybe some of that funding can be used to do a plan causal, how we can incorporate similar models that the city of St. Louis has or different. If we implement the same type of model in St. Louis County that will give families a decent restart in a tiny house that will lead into more permanent housing in a different city that will at least stabilize them. That was just one of my thoughts, in how to utilize the Housing Trust Fund. That will be a priority designated and approved by the commission. So.
So Chairman, Chairman, I do have a thought. I guess one is that it seems this plan was really, and not just the plan, but the organizations and the folks who came together to create it, you know, had a focus on really bringing in a number of different perspectives, agencies, interested parties to create this. And it also, it was something that to guide the collective efforts of, you know, everyone that has a part to play in this, in addressing homelessness in the county. And so with that in mind, I think we can't really determine our next steps or our directives without, you know, almost taking the same kind of holistic look to see, you know, as an ecosystem, how did we do? And then what role, because we can come up with something, but as you stated, our part, our funding part. is so small, you know, in comparison to the funds that are available. And so, um, you know, we're just one small cog in the greater, you know, machinery. And so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I, I don't think that we can make those decisions in a vacuum and just decide what we want to do for commission. But, you know, looking at this overall and then seeing what our small part would be.
I, I, um, I think I'm, I'm hearing to, um, to just to kind of piggyback off of what, what you said, Commissioner, is, uh, really what everybody's been saying is, what I, what I think I'm hearing is for, for the, the money that we have responsibility for, the need for emergency gap, whatever the right word is, is there? And then when it comes, and, and that we would likely stay in that space because it's emergency funding, like people are, don't have anywhere to go in the middle of the night or whatever time of the day or what have you. But then the, the, the trust fund, I would, I would ask some of the subject matter experts that are really here with us that are, that are working closely with it. Like, what is the area? So once I've, I've, I've found myself in this situation where I don't have any place to live that night, that day, I've been evicted, what have you. What seems to be the thing, if there is one, that most likely helps a person go from there to some type of housing? Do you all have a sense of that from, from the families that you've been working with out of curiosity?
It is my experience since being involved with the commission. Those follow a particular type of case management structure once they get within the COC. Once they receive basic assistance, they are recommended to various organizations that can provide them with some additional resource that will give them better stability. Question is, where do we fit in to assist them with this referral? So the commission looks at other funding structures and look at other resource areas. Maybe plus look at possible grant writing opportunities. Those are the things that we discuss among ourselves so that we can be a in those situations that are handled within the COC realm. So as Commissioner Bannon stated, and both Commissioner Bannon and Patricia K. He follows the, uh, each and I a system tracking in some form of case management, which, which directs those individuals to, uh, various resources. And when we study those, uh, case management cases, we can see, all right, this happened with this group of families in the month of January, this happened with this group of families in the month of March. And if we see, well, oh, okay, well, with this group, they needed this sort of assistance and we've let them here. That's how we can determine what our priority would be through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's where dollars can be allocated to address those specific needs. The housing trust fund can also address possibly down payment assistance for permanent housing if we have substantial funding. We just haven't reached that goal to where the, the original projection for the trust fund was to have allocated a hundred thousand dollars annually. We have not reached that. We have basically, purely up to two thousand dollars. So even with the original projection, it can be determined that a portion of that money can be used for gap funding assistance for, for families homeless and being homeless. Another portion can be allocated for down payment assistance. Maybe another portion towards professional projects. That was the original intent when this, when the, um, plan was made, when the Affordable, Affordable Housing Trust Fund was established and put under our purview. So as we have worked through the different issues of how our commission was functioning, how, what we were prioritized, we, we did exhaustive review of our current funding structures for what we funded as a commission, that's in our purview. We've gone through those stages. So now we're at this stage to determine what's going to be our priority for the trust fund going forward with the cannabis fund. And from that, we can determine how we can design our next five-year strategic plan, being with my thought process. So we have, we have come this far to narrow our focus to be, all right, we need to get the affordable housing trust fund up and active and running with, with, with specific prioritized allocations. Now that we do have some funds coming in.
So.
We cannot make any substantial funding of, uh, decisions until we know exactly how, how the cannabis funds are coming in, that is consistent. And then we know, and we can anticipate, well, next year we can have a hundred thousand dollars. Or next, following year, we can have a hundred thousand dollars. We see that it's growing, but it took us to this point. So we can prioritize what our focus would be. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, 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 um, like the, the language you're using about specific and prioritized. I would add tangible to that. And I say that because when I think of things like, well, we're going to fund more case management. If I'm, if I'm a person who's unhoused, like that means nothing to me that, okay, now some case manager is going to, like, I, I want something tangible. I want some down payment assistance. I want some, some, you mentioned tiny homes, like something that we would be able to say people tangibly can understand about what we're doing versus we're in this big sphere of, of housing and all of these different entities. And then we're sending more money to fund something that somebody else is doing that's at some point going to get to you as an unhoused person. I would, I would want to know that this commission has something more tangible than funding case management funding. I mean, and, and they're, all of that obviously has a place, but for what we're trying to do, I would just vote for something that's tangible at the end of the day for, um, people that they could see and we could point to.
We're going to drop them all, but I don't know if you saw in the chat, Commissioner Jordan has to leave at 10 o'clock. Um, and she wanted to know if there was going to be anything that was going to be voted on. Um, I believe there should still be a quorum if Commissioner Jordan does leave. Uh, but I just wanted to make you aware, if you hadn't seen the chat, that she's going to be leaving shortly.
Yeah.
Bye, Chairman Jordan.
No, I was just saying thank you. I, I do have to go in about three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us this morning, sharing your insight. Thank you.
And I don't know if we're voting on anything, but if it doesn't affect anything, or is that what I'm? Okay. Thank you, sir.
To Commissioner Armstead's point, if we as a commission decide we need to change what we focus on for our allocation of funding that's under our purview, to remove that funding from a particular, from the RFP process and then place those funds in a different priority area. We as a commission must come together test that and prove that within whatever, uh, because to remove that funding, which means that certain organization does not get access to resource and that will cause a, um, and what's a minimal to name people in a crisis situation, if we're really. So if we do decide to change our allocation process as far as we're going to change, we're going to take of the money we have, say, if we have five hundred thousand dollars to distribute, which is, which is not going to be in this year, it's going to be a whole list to our last financial report. That we will take one hundred thousand towards homelessness, but take another two hundred thousand, put that towards X, Y, and Z. We have to know that something's going to go with them. I think Commissioner Armstead mentioned that the united way we're going to figure things out, well, that's not really how that works. If those funds were given to us under our purview to allocate among the, the homeless and the shelter, the way. Now, we would change that. We can come together as a commission and vote on that and then make preparations for the next voting, um, voting cycle. Commissioner Bannon, go ahead.
Um, so Chairman Adams, I think what we, I just want to, so this is a document that's almost five years old. We need to understand what the current burden is so that we can reset priority. So we need to update the data. Um, we, we just, we really need to get a, a picture of what has changed and what has remained the same from pages seven through 14. So if we, if we get the data updated, then we can understand what the current burden is. I want to also point out that, um, there, you know, there is a, a, there's a couple of different plans already floating around. So we have, um, we had the Housing First STL event that took place, maybe, I don't know, a few weeks to a month ago. Um, and there's, there's this, uh, vision for solving homelessness in the region that was developed by this group. And so I don't really see, um, necessarily, um, the need to recreate the will when we already have groups who are thinking about this and creating plans. And if we simply align, then we can all be on one accord and be working toward the same goal so that we're coordinated. Um, it's just a thought, but I have this document here. Um, it's a vision. It says it's a, you know, the vision for solving homelessness in the region. So that's one plan that's already, already developed. Um, and then of course, there's the, there's also the, uh, Community Health Improvement Plan through the Department of Public Health. And they have a goal that by 2028, that they, they would see, uh, the implementation of opportunities to increase overall wealth by reducing the cost of housing and housing-related resources. And they have objectives in that plan um, that kind of coincide, uh, with what we're talking about here. So I just, what I, I think what would be helpful is if we try to align based on the, the updated burden that we have in the county as opposed to trying to, uh, create, um, kind of an updated and another plan, uh, that's kind, that's kind of separate. Um, so I'm just kind of off, offering that up, uh, because I know you're talking about kind of changing and resetting priorities. So.
Commissioner Banner, that, that, when I was saying subject matter expertise, that was really what I was looking for. Like, I didn't know that existed, but I'm thinking there are people who know this. So why, let's tap into that. That's exactly what, I didn't know what I was asking for, but that's a great example. I would love to get my hands on that.
Okay. And so, um, if.
Chris Bannon, uh, Chris Bannon also made mention that this looks concerning. So my, my question is, will the Planning Commission provide us that data in report form now? Or is that a request that's been made and they compile that? And did that present to us for our January meeting? Is that possible to get that updated data from pages 14 through 30?
I think that's a good question for the, the Department of Planning, um, to, to make that request. Um, if that's where, where this data came from. Um, I certainly think it would be good for us to actually see a refreshed picture of the burden for the county. So if we can start there, then we understand the current state before we start making changes and reallocating priorities and, and redistributing funds. I just want to be clear in that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money is, is, I hate to throw a figure out because we're, we're trying to, you know, kind of nail down that amount, but it's, it's less than a hundred grand. So it's, it's very small. And to Commissioner Armstead's, um, question earlier about, you know, when you have a family in the middle of the night and they are, you know, in crisis and, and what does it mean for them to have housing? That's, sometimes that can be so far down the spectrum because they have to tell us what their need is. They determine what they need in that moment when they're in crisis. It could mean that they just need first month's rent in deposit. They could have been evicted and so they need a repayment of past due, uh, you know, rent that, that they weren't able to pay. Um, they could need clothing. They could need bus tickets, train tickets, because we're also talking about those who are fleeing from a very traumatic, uh, environment. So I'm, I'm alluding to Kathy J. Wyman Shelter. And so the needs are so different sometimes that I think if we're thinking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money and how slim it is, so we can't do a whole lot with that small amount of money, but what we can do is actually address the emergent need, the crisis need on a first come, first served basis while funds last. Like, it's just, it's an idea. It's just something to throw out there because it's about sixty-five thousand dollars, say, approximately somewhere around there that we have in that bucket. Yeah, but it's definitely less than a hundred grand and we don't have control over it. So we only get a percentage of fee based, based on, and I think Mac, you could probably chime in a little bit here, but we don't have control over that money. I mean, we, so we might not want to set a goal of a hundred thousand dollars because we're not in control of that. Uh, we can't control who files their, um, recorder of deeds. You know, how many people do that in a year? That's something we don't have control over. We get maybe three dollars of that, of that filing uh, for each filing throughout the year. And that may or may not, um, be up to a hun- a hundred thou- thousand dollars. It just depends. So, so I think what I'm saying about that pot of money, once we get a firm figure and we can share that, it's still not going to be impressive. I want you to know that. It won't. You won't be impressed with it. We won't be able to do very much with it. And, and, but because it's there and it's so small, there are real needs that can make a real impact in someone's life and we can use that money for that purpose. I'm just bringing that forward, but I don't think, I think we have plenty of people creating plans around affordable housing and homelessness that we don't have to create another one. What we can do is just get on the bus. We can, we can get on the bus of, of the, of the plans that are already being established with groups that are coming together already right now and say, okay, we're going to be in alignment with this plan. That's the Housing Resources Commission's plan, right? We don't have, because this was five years ago. This plan was put together before, thanks to Shannon in large part, before groups were coming together to create plans. This is the first of, you know, that I've seen of its, of its real, um, gravity. Okay, but, but it, now we need, we need a refresh. So we have something like that here most recently. But then also we can reach out to the, the Department of Planning and ask them to update these figures, these numbers for us. So we have a burden. Uh, you know, we have, we have, um, a more, a more current, up-to-date picture of the burden throughout the county. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And, uh, if, is it possible for you to make that request on our behalf? Then we can have it by our January meeting. Can we expect that to be possible?
I, I'm happy to do that, but I, I do think, um, Chairman Adams, it, it might be good coming from you as, as the chair. I think that, you know, your request to the Department of Planning to their, their director, that's Jacob Trimble, um, I think would be well received.
That's from Trimble?
Mm-hmm. And I can share his contact information with you if you need it, his email address. All right.
I, I will, I will do that. I will, um, I will work with Melinda to, to draft a request to him. He can give that information.
I can't really get excited about that. I mean, the fact that somebody somewhere, and I'm sitting on this Zoom to, you know, trying to make decisions for someone I may never meet, but that whatever type of crisis that they're in, in that moment, that there's some type of money, even though it's small, that went to help them right then and there, get to that next step. Like, this is a ladder approach. So I, you know, as you were talking, I thought, well, that's it. You know, that's a, it just felt right to me because I really want us to think about if one of the, 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 the people that were in an emergency situation were on this call with us, wha, what would they be telling us?
Right.
And I just, I, I just, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear them represented here. And I just feel obligated to meet them where they are with whatever money or decision-making that we have. So I appreciated hearing, hearing that because it brought people to life for me.
And can I just add one other point really quickly that I'm noticing that we, within the Department of Human Services, is having, um, a hard time keeping up with the cost on is, uh, hotel night stays. So a lot of times our funding doesn't pay for hotel night stays and we're at capacity as is. Everybody is, right? That, that's the issue is that there isn't enough housing. There isn't enough shelter. Um, and, and we have, eh, the volume of the population that needs shelter is growing. And so hotel night stays is something that I'd like to just put forward as an option, perhaps for later vote, um, when we're talking about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money, um, as something that I, I think would be very helpful to, to the overall structure of, of the region because it's just, it's, it's one of those things that is very difficult for the Department of Human Services to, uh, pay for, given its funding mechanisms. Um, and the Housing Resources Commission is just that. It's, it's the, it's resource, it's housing resources. It's sort of like the funds that are a little more unrestricted, if you will, compared to grants that we have to comply with that actually list out a laundry list of restrictions, limitations, disallowed costs, things like that. So, um, I'll pause there, but I just, I wanna, I wanna offer that up.
Can, I, can I make one more? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm
Commissioner Armstead, Commissioner Banner, uh, with the hotel stay, uh, is there a current uh, hotel or motel that the county is using for that purpose?
Not specifically. It does vary. It does depend and, um, it depends on the hotel's ability. Uh, so their, their capacity as well. So sometimes that's a limitation. But I do know that if we had the ability to contract with a hotel, they can reserve us a subset of rooms, um, very confidentially, um, so that we can refer individuals to those rooms on a, as needed basis. That's the trick of it is because it's an as-needed basis, you know? And so they have to reserve rooms that they would otherwise be getting paid for, 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 uh, for us. Uh, so, uh, it, it, it just takes some coordination. Um, but I just wanna kinda share that because it's something that's hard for us to find allowable funds to pay for that I, I think might be, there might be an opportunity here within the commission to think about that.
Commissioner Armstead, go ahead.
So you are, I, I know that in the past maybe year, I have, I've said something that is very, very unpopular with the group, but I, I, as I listen to Commissioner Banner, um, if you all would just hear me out again, and, and I know that I've, it's very unpopular. The money that we have been allocating before is going to well-established organizations. What, if I recall, a hundred thousand dollars of the HRC money, you know, for example, goes to United Way. Now, the United Way will raise seventy million to eighty million dollars per year. That hundred thousand dollars, if we didn't, I, 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 I know it's, if we didn't give that hundred thousand dollars to these well-established organizations, what could we do with a hundred thousand dollars for hotels or for emergency needs in a, in a bucket of money versus giving to a well-established organization that is going to raise seventy, eighty million dollars per year? Like, I, I, I know we get a lot of pushback anytime I've mentioned that, but when we look at the money that we have, and I'm not talking about the Housing Trust Fund money, I'm talking about the other money and we're funding very well-established organizations. I still struggle with why that is our role when these are some fundraising machines out here. Um, and I, in my, my day job, understand when funding, how, how critical it is to, when you're depending on funding. Um, but these well-established organizations will not crumble without this HRC money and, and, and we could take some of this money and reallocate it to this emergency need that is being experienced by families um, from hotels to, uh, you know, just the other things that Commissioner Banner, um, mentioned. Bus tickets, whatever it is, to know that there's a fund available for that, just, it just feels more impactful to me. Um, and I think that these, some of these other organizations just might survive and be able to still work with the unha, uh, unhoused population in the same way that they have been if we did not give them that hundred thousand or that seventy thousand or whatever that is.
Commissioner Armstead, just, just as a point of information, of the groups that we have funded for this current year, which one are you referring to as a well-established organization?
Well, the, the United Way is one of them.
These, I, I'm talking about the ones that we fund because we don't, we don't fund the United Way.
On, on that, on that budget, we had the United Way. It was like a hundred thousand dollars. So did we stop? Cause we had a lot of conversation about that.
Was, was that organization associated with the United Way as far as, did they get someone there funding?
Something to do with that, that, the, the number that you call, the, the, the two, whatever that number is.
The one-one?
Yes. It was the funding for that number. Because we talked ad nauseam about it and I was just stopped talking because I know it was not popular.
That, it's The two-one-one is the entryway for those individuals to get things served.
Yes.
So what you're saying is that if we remove the funding from that, that two-one-one will find some other funding. Is that what you're saying?
I, I think we should discuss it. I, I, that is, that is my understanding. Every time we talk about it, that was the United Way's number.
We're working conjunction with United Way, but we don't fund the United Way, but we use that mechanism for two-one-one as the entryway for our, for the people who are needing services to gain access. That's the doorway. So we would have to discuss that if we remove them. Let's put that somewhere else. So they get access. You see what I'm saying? They have no way to get access. They have to call through St. Louis County.
Well, we were just part of that funding as I understood it, that this, this was a, a major funded number and we were just giving money to the major funding of that number.
But if there's, if the funding for St. Louis County to have entryway, you see what I'm saying? So if we, if we remove that funding, people will not have access through St. Louis County to reach resource.
I think we should talk about it. Maybe not here, but I, I wanna, if we could revisit it, because we talked so much about that number and the connection to the United Way.
I just wanna have a better understanding of what you were addressing, but now I see what you're, what you're talking about. And we, we can discuss that, uh, in a different session. That's, I understand. Thank you so much. Okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, move to adjourn, but before I do that, Commissioner, uh, Banner, I want to make sure I have the right language when I'm making the request to Mr. Trimble. Cause I'm, I'm asking for an update of X, Y, and Z. Can you kind of propose what that verbiage should be?
Okay, so, um, I think what you could essentially ask for is, uh, you, you could provide a copy of this document here that Melinda is sharing. And I would just point to pages seven through fourteen of that document that outlines essentially the burden of St. Louis County, um, in terms of affordable housing and homelessness. And we'd like to request, um, an update to the data that's reflected within that document.
And Chairman Adams, I don't know if you've seen, but Commissioner Koenig has had her hand up, um, to, to talk.
Well, I did not, I cannot see that on my screen, but the, the chair does recognize. Commissioner Kenny, go ahead. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. I know my comments are a little delayed at this point, so forgive me for going, for going back. I did just wanna note too that Commissioner Gannon put in the chat that she likes the direction of this conversation and, and I think we've made good headway today. Um, I, I appreciate everything that's being said. Um, I wanted to go back and just acknowledge what, uh, Commissioner Banner said about some of the stuff that's going on regionally that, that hasn't been part of our conversation until she introduced that. And I think it is important to note that there's a lot of conversation going on among housing and homeless providers around what we're discussing and, you know, the same sort of complicated matters that, that we're trying to address in our own county are now being tackled by the region. And so I do think that, um, as we tried to do in twenty twenty with not reinventing the wheel and acknowledging that there've been a lot of reports out there, right, and trying to kind of set that direction. Again, I think it's important to look outward um, and for the county to be, um, in alignment with what else is already there. Not reinventing the wheel, but, you know, trying to be part of that overall positive impact in the county with others and in the region if that ends up being the case. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner, I, I missed phone call. My son, I'm sorry. Uh, did you want to Yeah, please do, because I'm sorry. I did not hear that.
Okey-dokey. Um, I, I just wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Banner's comments about, um, you know, when we look to do our plan, that there are other things going on in the region. And before she made her comment, there wasn't any acknowledgement about the fact that there is a regional planning effort underway um, in, you know, with regard to housing and homeless and a lot of the providers that are in this space are involved in those conversations. So I think it's good to acknowledge that there's these other things going on. There's other reports out there. That is, I think, a little bit of the context that we had when, in four years ago, five years ago with this plan is like, there's been a lot of reports out here. This is the direction we wanna take right now. Um, I think that it's important to continue to stay in alignment with others in the county. She cited the County Health Department, but also in the region, if that's an opportunity to just, um, continue to row in the same direction as others to try to get that, keep up the momentum and the, the forward motion. I think that's important. Um, I didn't say that I do think, uh, also it should be relatively straightforward to get that information from the Planning Department. I think they have it pretty well packaged and available. So hopefully that would be an easy add to our report to, yes, understand where we are today if we're, you know, w- where we are today versus where we were five years ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenny.
Thank you.
Input. Commissioner Banner, uh, also for our January meeting, those two, uh, organizations that were addressing issue of homelessness and housing. You can send the information available for us at next meeting. We can also discuss that after our department reports.
Uh, could, could you, could you, uh, help me understand exactly what it is you'd like for me to pull for you? A little more detail?
Those two documents you just showed us.
Oh, these two. Okay. I can, uh, so the one that I, 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 this one here with the, the vision, um, for solving homelessness in the region. I got this by hard copy, so what I can do is scan this to you all because I don't have, I cannot find this online anywhere. I don't have a PDF of it. Um, it was provided to me. Um, and so that's what I'll do for this. I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of it, but the community, um, Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP, that I, I alluded to through the Department of Public Health, that one is online. So I can send that via email to you right after this call, but I, if, if I may, just for a moment, um, the Housing Resources Commission funded United Way of Greater St. Louis at eighty, eighty grand for coordinated entry. Eighty thousand, even if we wanted to keep doing that in good faith, right, so that we continue to, you know, fund an access point for coordinated entry and we didn't want to, to move that, uh, priority. We, we would still have over three hundred grand. Um, we, we would still have plenty, I would say, in, in, in comparison to consider, um, if, if it was going to be reallocated in any kind of way in terms of priority around the, you know, emergent needs, um, where through the coordinated access entry, uh, point, uh, those special needs, emergent needs can be identified at that access point. And then the Housing Resources Commission, uh, money that's, that's remaining can be utilized for addressing whatever allowable costs. We, we determine that money should be allocated toward, whether it's hotel night stays, uh, whether it's first last month rent deposit, um, maybe it's, it's still rapid rehousing so that individuals who are near, uh, they're at risk for eviction. We, we rapidly rehouse them so that we can get them back, um, in, in housing as quickly as possible. Those are two very strong priorities that I, I would advocate for, but that still leaves us, even with rapid rehousing, we only, we only funded them twenty thousand dollars. We only twenty thousand. That, that was it. So there's still more money in, in the, you know, there's still a nice chunk there to kind of say, okay, at, you know, if we wanna make our priority in the next year or so, or years following, um, to, to really say, okay, three hundred thousand dollars, um, of this money is gonna go toward emergent immediately. I mean, we're talking diapers, wipes, formula. I mean, these are individuals who need right now help with items um, that they just, we at the Department of Human Services are, are likely restricted in providing funding for, um, but, but they're, they're still needed. Um, homeless, uh, kits. So like book bags that actually have like hand sanitizer and non-perishable, you know, food, uh, you know, within, within the backpack. Um, ponchos for, for rain. Um, it, 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 there's so much to talk about. I, I won't go into that, but I just wanna kind of let you know how much we actually funded for the United Ways of Greater St. Louis. That was only eighty grand for coordinated entry. And then rapid rehousing, uh, through Employment Connection was at twenty grand, just so you have those numbers right now.
Commissioner Banner, Melinda, do you want to, you were, you thought I saw you pop up?
I'm sorry. I can't hear you, Commissioner.
Were you popping up like you had your hand raised or you was trying to say something?
No, that wasn't me.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Banner. Uh, Commissioner, the commission will discuss that having, based upon our conversation today, we would discuss uh, those issues and those items in print as far as reallocation of funding moving forward. It'll be a part of our discussion in January. So thank you for that input. We would definitely consider that. Commissioner Armstead, you can bring your recommendations as well. And we'll have a better discussion by our next couple of meetings and with them we can move forward. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I ask a question? May I just ask one last question of clarification? Is it, is it, is it, the understanding that I have is that the Department of Human Services does not have full capacity or ability, whatever the right word is, to really address the emergent needs that you were mentioning? Like, there's no
The Director of
I'm sorry, Commissioner Banner, you're saying that the Department of Human Services doesn't really have, I don't know, a bucket of money or whatever it is to really address these emergent needs?
We do, but it is limited.
It's limited.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And, and not only is that money limited, but there are other pots of money that are quite restricted. There are grants that we've received There are grants that we've received from funders, but there are allowable costs um that, that are. Um, there are, are costs that are not allowed. Um, and so those grants have to be, the grant funding has to be spent. On particular strategies to address particular needs and those are not always emergent needs. So I have less to work with within the Department of Human Services. Less money to work with to address emergent needs like that.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Armstead, Commissioner Banner.
And I did drop a link to the um Community Health Improvement Plan in the chat for the group.
Thank you so much. That, that would help us for our January discussion. I thought I heard Commissioner uh Gannon about a, a motion. Can you repeat that, please? Commissioner Gannon. Who provided the motion to adjourn? Thought I heard that in the, it was, it was a.
I could make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Commissioner Kennedy. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Is it, is it moved this segment that for us to adjourn? The time is at ten thirty-six. I will accept a vote of affirmation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say the same. Affirm that we have approved the motion to adjourn. The time is at ten thirty-six. Our next meeting time. Even date on our agenda, I believe it is the fifth.
Yes, that one is. Yes, sir. The January sixteenth is for just, um. A regular HRC meeting. If you want to schedule another special session in regards to the strategic plan. Um, I can talk to you off the phone, I mean, on the phone, and we can discuss the time or, or day.
That'll be, that'll be after the January meeting, but we're going to wait for that information to come from the planning department and I will talk to you about that later.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so the one for, um, the first of the year is just, um, I sent you the agenda items. I'm sorry, I can't see them. But it was a couple of things.
Everyone, because this meeting has adjourned, if you could call up Melinda with Chair Adams afterwards individually, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you at the next meeting session in January. Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Thanks. Have a good holiday.